Okay. Go ahead, it's seven o'clock, going to go ahead and call the planning and zoning meeting for March 3rd, 2020 to order. First item is roll call. Commissioner Hudson.
Yep.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Present.
Commissioner Lovegood.
Here.
Commissioner Boyer.
Present.
Commissioner Klein.
Here.
And I am Commissioner Works. Next item is public comment, we have one speaker. Lucas Evans, if you'll please come up to the desk and state your name and your address. You have three minutes.
How's it going, my name is Lucas Evans, 3750 County Road 132 South. On Monday, the Ranger excavation broke ground on cottonwood development. And boy, did they break ground, they were out there until about 15 minutes ago. Hauling away USDA prime farmland. Don't know if y'all know this, but it's one of the most limited natural resources that we have. And I know we can't change history, but when we give a development the go-ahead, and actually, I don't know if this is a thing, but that's not the end of a development, that's the beginning of a development. And there ought to be oversight at every step of the way. I've been talking with Ranger, with CCC, with CR, putting in, y'all see WRX, Triple DL. And none of these people, the left hand is not talking to the right, nobody knows what's going on, they don't even know what creek it is, they don't even know which neighborhood they're plugging into. And that's obvious. With the Meritage development right next door, y'all dropped a sewer line right through the only natural spring that I know of in the city. And it's where was the home of a lot of things that not included me, but um yeah, I know none of y'all obviously are farmers here. And Tony, to have the chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission scoff at my mention of climate change is absolutely appalling. Because there is consequences to our actions that take place here, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Clark, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Lovegood, thank you for even opening a line of communication with me, but this is serious. Okay, I think we might get in here and we have name tags and we think that we're doing a good thing. No, that just means that you have a position to do a good thing. This is serious, I'm asking for somebody to come out and look and understand, I don't think anybody out here has even stepped foot on this property. And I'm at least asking that we tag some trees before we go ahead and clear anything and everything for utilities and gas lines and whatever the fuck we want to. So if we have somebody that does that, I've been out there, I told them to contact me when they start cutting down trees and I'll tag them for them. But this is serious, we're not playing games here, all right, these people are voting because they care about their future, right? Not because some guy's here saying that he wants to build something that's going to do something for somebody in some other place at somewhere. This is real, these are real people.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is for A, consideration and possible action on the meeting minutes from the regular scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting held on February 4th, 2020. Does everybody have a chance to go over them? I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes from the February 4th, 2020 P&amp;Z commission meeting as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Boyer, seconded by Commissioner Hudson. No discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Passes seven oh. For B, consideration and possible recommendation on the proposed Wilco Ranch, excuse me, Phase One final plat, 15.628 acres more or less of land, 80 residential lots located Limerloop and County Road 119.
Good evening Commissioners, so you guys saw this one as a prelim not too long ago and then it went to council for annexation and a development agreement?
Ashley, excuse me, can you bring it up on the computers?
Yeah, it's not up?
No.
I think you have to turn it on, sorry.
Oh, mine's on, but it's not.
I've got one computer on, but the other one says no signal.
Yeah. Yeah, no signal.
Lights are on, but no one's home. Which one of you guys is 119?
It's usually on the left screen, right?
No, it's usually on the right.
No, it's probably on this left one, right here.
Yeah.
David said that it'd come down and he had to apologize something, now that it was just the power.
Yes, we just swivel chair.
I was gonna say, there's nothing besides the main power.
It just turned off, I guess from that, I have my concealed license and it's not allowed.
Is there actual computers?
No.
He did something over here, I think.
Yeah, it was on, beside the computer or something.
It's not just that.
Up.
That's fine, that's fine.
Are y'all okay with it just being up there?
Sure.
Ashley. Just go ahead and put it back up on the left screen, we can look at it that way.
I can see it better that way anyway.
Thank you.
Well, I apologize for that, that's weird.
That's okay.
Technology. Alright, so this one is at the corner of Limerloop and County Road 119. This is the first phase of the prelim that you guys saw last month. 80 single-family lots, it was annexed at the city council meeting, along with the development agreement, was approved by city council on February 6th. As a reminder, this one was originally done in the county and then they came to annex because they needed our sewer. And so they were grandfathered in, allowed a little bit smaller lots than what we currently allow. And that's written into the development agreement, so they have a lot of 40-foot lots on this subdivision and this phase is all 40-foot lots. But again, that conforms to the development agreement. Staff reviewed the plat, it meets the UDC for what it, that's not in the development agreement. And then it conforms to the development agreement and the local government code. So staff recommends that you guys recommend approval of the Wilco Ranch Phase One final plats to city council with the condition that prior to recordation, signature blocks be corrected, the lien holder language be corrected, and the applicant provide all signatures, which is really just kind of a housekeeping item. We just want to make sure that the plat is ready to go before it goes to city council or be recorded.
So this is Phase One?
Yes, sir.
Are they gonna, do they have the same ability through the rest of their phases?
Yeah, so the development agreement allows for 40-foot lots throughout, they do have, I don't know off the top of my head the number, but they have probably 70 to 80% 40-foot lots and then the rest are 45s.
What's the overall acreage of the entire, I guess, whole phase?
It's about 65 acres. And it's going to be about 450 lots total.
So this is, so if somebody else went with the Williamson County and then when they wanted to get annexed in, we'd be in the same boat again?
Potentially, I mean, I think this one's a little different because there are certain things, so we needed sewer. Or they needed our sewer, and so we worked with them on a development agreement, they still wanted the smaller lots. And so that was part of kind of the negotiation to get them to annex, they didn't have to annex.
Okay.
The only reason, there were two reasons to annex, which were to get the city sewer and there's a TIA component that we worked on with them for phasing through the development agreement. But yeah, I mean, somebody could plat in the county, but you wouldn't be able to get septic on a lot that small in the county, and so they would eventually have to come into our sewer system.
It's an interesting loophole.
It is, and we're working with the county, we do have an agreement with them on who has platting authority for situations like this. And Sam and his team have worked on getting our sewer system. It's called our CCN, to be the holy TJ, and basically what our agreement with the county says is that because if it's in our sewer CCN, they have to come to us first. And so that gives us a little bit more control over future development in the TJ because of our sewer CCN expansion.
So they weren't originally in our CCN?
Right.
And then the annexation brought them in?
Yeah, the annexation brought them in and then with the expansion of our CCN, you know, we've been working with them on getting the connection to our sewer, so.
Seeing how we saw this a month ago, I make a motion to accept the final plat is entered.
I have a motion by Commissioner.
I second it.
Clark?
I second it.
I have a second by Commissioner Robinson, any other discussion?
Can I request to see the development agreement?
Yeah, we can send that out to you guys.
It'd be nice to be able to see the development agreements with any of the items that reference it, that way we can at least kind of see the backstory on how we got to where we are.
Yeah, and really, I mean, the development agreement really, the big one is the 40-foot lots, because that's not typically allowed by our UDC. But because they were grandfathered in, what that did is that kind of formalized the nonconformance of those lots, and so, sure, we can send that out to you guys. But in the future, we can add it.
Yeah, it'd just help connect the dots on
Sure.
some of the reasons why they may be doing what we're doing.
Any other discussion? Time for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes seven zero. Item 4C, consideration and possible recommendation of the proposed Huttup Crossing Industrial Park final plat, 125.977 acres more or less of land, six commercial lots located at US 79 West and SH 130 SB, front of Chro.
So you guys had an email at the DIAS tonight, the applicant has requested a postponement, we had a meeting with them earlier today. There's some engineering concerns, and so Sam and his team are working with their engineer on correcting those, mainly regarding the floodplain. Oh, it came up and then it went away. And so the floodplain changed in December, and so with that, it caused some concerns on this plat, and so we're working with the developer on correcting those issues and making sure that the development will not adversely impact any of the adjacent properties. And so in doing so, they wanted to postpone until we get those issues addressed. And so with that, I think the staff recommendation is that you guys postpone it and just so, we just need somebody to make a motion to postpone, and we'll bring it back when it's ready.
Alright, I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone this agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion by, sorry, Commissioner Robinson to table it or postpone it.
I have a second.
I have a second by Commissioner Lovegood, any other discussion?
Another request, so it's referencing an approved PUD, is there any way to have the approved PUD included with the?
Yeah, and so I think we can do that, I think the easiest thing to do, if you guys, on our website, we have an interactive GIS. I don't know if you've seen it, but if you go, we have a PUD zoning map on there.
Oh, okay.
And you can zoom in to this parcel and then our GIS analyst has actually put the PUD document in there. And so I think it's really helpful for everyone that they can be able to see those, and so that may be easier than us including it in the packet.
Yeah, or even a link in here, just for the public, that way they can go and click on it and see it really easily, because if it's all there, that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, and he also added the development agreements too.
Oh, great.
He's done a great job getting all that information out there.
So do you think this will come up for our next meeting, or?
It'll probably be a little bit longer than that, they have to go through a LOMER, which is a letter of map revision process with FEMA. And that would slightly adjust the floodplain based off of the information that their engineer, our engineer, and a third-party engineer discuss. It'll probably be a couple of months, if I had to guess.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, to table the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, passes seven zero. Item 4D, consideration and possible recommendation on the proposed Mustang Creek Phase Three final plat, 18.568 acres more or less of land, 90 residential lots located on FM 1660 north.
So this is Phase Three of eight for Mustang Creek. It is north of, or it's, I'm sorry, it's south of the new high school site. And this phase is just north of the first two phases on the east side of 1660. 90 single-family lots, they have all the connectivity they need to meet code. Two Greenland lots and then three open space lots. It meets the UDC and the development agreement, and so with that, staff recommends approval of Mustang Creek Phase Three with the same condition that prior to recordation, all the signatures provided.
Any discussion? I have something.
Yes, sir.
Do we know where we stand as far as 1660 widening it in that area where that stands? Because Mustang's going in, it's going to create a lot of traffic on 1660, the high school's going in. And I believe the last time, when they first brought this to us, that was a concern and we were told the school was working with Tech Dot. Do we know?
So, right, so the ISD is working with Tech Dot and they're getting a left-turn lane for the southbound traffic. And then they're working with Tech Dot and the developer here to get a right-turn lane for the northbound traffic, which will alleviate any stopped traffic for people that needed to turn onto these sites. As far as adding additional traffic through traffic lanes, I don't think that that's been, I don't think that that's going to happen, at least with these two developments. And Sam can probably speak to that a little bit more, but I don't think that Tech Dot is going to widen this road for these two developments.
Once that high school goes in, that street's gonna.
Yeah, so there will be, they're adding an east-west street and we're going to try and potentially connect that through so that there's another way out, and so it's not just 1660. So basically, in between the ISD site and Mustang Creek, they're going to put in an east-west road. And that should eventually connect all the way to another road.
Yeah, but does it get us on access onto 130, otherwise if you're just hitting Exchange Boulevard or?
It would, I think it would actually hit County Road 133, which will come all the way down, and then that'll connect to the overpass, which will hit 79.
Okay.
So there will be another, at least, you know, thoroughfare, major thoroughfare type route.
When is the high school supposed to open?
Well, it's a ninth, it's going to start as a ninth-grade center.
I think.
Right, but when is this due to open?
I think it's fall '21, isn't it?
I think it, yeah, I think it's, last I heard, I thought it was fall, yeah, the fall semester of 2021. So they have a little ways to go.
Okay. Yeah, that's true.
My daughter will be the first freshman at that.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to accept the Mustang Creek Phase Three plat as approved by staff and for approval upon to city council.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Clark.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Boyer, any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, seven, passes seven oh. Item number five, Development Service Director report.
So I don't really have a whole lot, the only thing I wanted to add is that the last city council meeting, the city council voted to select council liaisons for each board, and so you'll see Councilmember Peter Gordon here, he's our liaison. And so staff's going to work with him, and so if y'all have anything that y'all are trying to, if y'all have any concerns or anything that y'all need help from, from a council level, we can work with Councilman Gordon on trying to get those things addressed.
Cool. Look forward to working with you, Peter.
Me too.
Any other question? Item six, will you turn?
Before we go, there's a couple of things I'd like to ask staff. I'd say that Councilman, Councilman, Commissioner Klein had brought a good point about some of these, some of these PUDs and these agreements. Couple of things I'm thinking of is, I know we could either put them in our packet when you send them to us via email, so we can have that, you don't necessarily have to print them off, but we'd like to be able to review them, I think that's a good, a good point on his, on his part. Second of all, is there, has anybody thought about maybe us up here having access into, you know, like the councilmen have access into the environment? Getting us credentials to log in because there may be an opportunity. Instead of printing up and costing money to print, maybe we can just get in and take a look at some of these here in the process of these agenda items coming up, so we can kind of review at our own little pace at the same time and look, I mean, is that, is that a feasible option?
Yeah, I mean.
I didn't say anything, I'm good, you answer.
I mean, we can definitely talk to IT about getting all of y'all an account. I think as far as adding in the additional backup, the PUDs and the development agreements and things of that nature, we can, if y'all have the account, we can just put a shortcut to the interactive GIS and then you can have access to all of that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, that way you're not spending money on printing stuff out.
Right.
We've got it right there for us, we can bring it up if there's a question.
And I mean, staff reviews the development agreement and the PUD when things like this come through, to make sure that they are in conformance with those.
Right.
But I can understand you guys wanting that additional information, so.
Yeah.
And then I'll add now something, but certainly in the meantime, if it's going to take longer to get credentials for some reason, if there's a security issue or something where we don't want to mix the two, for some reason, we can certainly start including those links with that email that we send out to each of you.
And I think that that's a fair first, first step right there to give us a chance to look at it. Second of all, was just this, so that maybe we can save some money on paper.
Yeah, and I think it's, it'd be great if the links were on, in the packet for the public, because I know we get a lot of questions about what's in the development agreement, what was agreed to, how we got to where we're at. So if they can just click on a link and they go to pull up the packet.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I think you'd have to dig, you'd have to probably just know which council agenda if it would help. In the meantime, my main concern mostly is on ministerial items such as plats, because we are so beholden to state law. We want to ensure that we are not getting overboard, because if we give a development agreement or zoning, it doesn't pertain to that plat application, it should not be up for discussion again. We can answer questions on it, but we cannot renegotiate a zoning, we cannot renegotiate, and so that's the only part that I would still caution, we will gladly provide, but if we start to have to go down there, as you saw, I think at the last meeting, it's a quorum issue, we need to stop. We have a hard stop on some things, just because we cannot deny an application that statute trolling meets, or we are at risk of a lawsuit.
Sure, and I appreciate those restrictions on that.
And so that's the one thing, is we can start also adding those disclaimers of, this is why we have to do some of these things, especially on the platting applications, because so much of it is guided by state law. We have a 30-day timeframe, I mean, there's so many things that we have to do that I think the general public doesn't always know.
Right.
That we are so regimented in how we process plats, strictly because of how the legislative body has decided that all of the state should process our plats.
And I would also, on that note, I understand that there may be some things that you would not be able to give to us via our email, you know, if there's some.
I think everything we do luckily is not something that always comes up in executive session, so our things will always be transparent, even if we haven't included it in the packet, it's always online.
I think I'm just looking.
Hopefully a reasonable amount of time.
I'm just thinking, you know, maybe like certain records have, there's a process, who can view them, what happened, there's a process for being able to.
Well, I think that's part of, part of our goal is to have all of those documents readily available for everyone.
Right.
And so that interactive GIS has all of them hyperlinked. And so anybody can go on there and see any DA or any PUD or any plat, you know.
I think give Ashby's credit for what he's done with his team, it's not just DAs for development agreements, it's also the DAs in lieu of annexation. So while he was busy getting about 9,500 acres in on a development agreement, those are now also available. So as we had to go through and customize those for each property owner, that's something that Seth has also put online. So we're trying to be, so if there's something that you want, let us know, we can try to either put it on the interactive site or get it online so that we are completely transparent in how we're running.
Got it, and I, yeah, and I get that, I guess I'm just trying to be respectful of the fact there are certain things have to go through a certain process, you know, it's available, but there's a process for being able to look at it. And I know we are privy to certain pieces of information, and so I'm just trying to be respectful that maybe if it needs to be controlled or.
I mean, everything you guys are going to see on an agenda is going to be public, so.
Okay.
We can get you all the information
We can do that.
in the most efficient manner. So is the concern, if you include it in the packet, then people are thinking that it's something that's still up for.
Yeah, we want to make sure that like, if the development.
We haven't been here before when they're like, why did y'all, I'm like, this is an agreement from like 15 years ago, we cannot. And people came up, coming up, coming up, coming, we're like, we can't discuss that, it's like, I'm mad, you're pissed, but that's state law, it's done.
I understand your point, however, I can't change what had happened, I can't change the zoning and platting application.
And I'm like, and you're living outside the city and it's Williamson County, you're mad at the wrong people.
Well, and I don't know that that's going to change, but I mean, we have, you know, different sections under the agenda item, maybe there, you know, reference material or something that's just, yeah, tells somebody that it's just for reference, it's already done with.
Yeah, we can put a little.
Our previous reference materials or approved reference, you know, something that just lets them know that that's already a done deal, but you can still look at it if you want to know how we got to where we're at.
And if there's a way that you see on the interactive GIS or something that you think that, hey, this could help me, or this would be great if we had a direct link, let us know, because there are ways that we can work with our PIO team to affect change even on the website to better illustrate where to find that information, like I saw a Facebook post where if you look at our development viewer, you see site plans and then building permits, but nobody was swiping to the building permit, so they didn't actually think the development was coming. But if you just go to the second page and it was like, well, maybe because most people are now using our phones, we break it up into two separate maps, so you can see the site plans and the building permits in two separate locations, not on the same map, and you don't have to know, oh, well, if I scroll to the bottom and I change the view, then I get the information. We certainly want to make it as easily available as possible.
Yeah, I mean, GIS data is where it's at, I mean, I've used it all the time.
And we have the best GIS person ever, so.
So that's great, that's good to hear.
I have a question. Where are we on the signs?
They're approved.
The signs?
They're sitting, not in your office anymore, are they?
Well, the public notice signs?
Yeah, public, I'm sorry.
We have them, they're ready to go, so once we get an application that needs the notifications, they'll be out there.
Okay, I just, thank you, just wanted to know where we're at.
And the fee schedule, I think, goes to city council again this week?
Yes, and so it'll, should go live at the very beginning. I think March 9th is the first day it goes live, because we have to do, right?
March 9th, right, yeah.
That's really quick. This many. So we will have that go live. I think thankfully, we have not gotten an application that requires a zoning notice, but once we do, we have, actually, we seem already worked on getting those at a very affordable rate that matches with what we put in the fee schedule that was recently then recommended to, I think recommended for the second reading at this next time at city council, so we should be ready to go.
Cool. Did we ever get the icon of like the hippo with the construction hat on it or something?
We put the Hutto logo on there. They, we tried to look at options for that, and it was just gonna be expensive, because we could just send them the image for the logo, because we already had all that.
So we're gonna see how these work for now. And then if we can change it in the future, but that'll probably end up involving several more departments, because we can't change, our department can't change the logo or our branding without everybody else's involvement. That's out of our span of control.
I make a motion to.
We have a motion adjourned. We are adjourned at 7:30.